I ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. So as mayor, there's a lot of work that I have to do, but there's some stuff that I really, really enjoy. And one of those is when we get citizens, or high school students, or other very important people come into our council chambers, and we get to give them an award. And this evening, we have members of the Sunnyside High School Wrestling Team, state champions, and we get to recognize their accomplishments. And I'm not a wrestler, but I know a few, and I know the amount of work that they have to put into it. When I was in high school, I remember kids trying to lose weight, kids trying to gain weight, to meet their weight categories, and all of that sort of stuff, in addition to the practices that they had to do, and then, of course, all of the wrestling matches that they had to participate in. And so this is something that we're really proud of. We want you to know that the city of Sunnyside is proud of you. We're impressed with your work, we're impressed with your effort, and this is something that you can feel good about yourselves for. We give a city coin, or the mayor's coin, to individuals who have excelled, who have gone above and beyond the call of duty, who have pushed really hard and achieved great things, and who we're basically proud of. And we want you to know that, and we want the community to know that. We want the community to know about you. So I'd like to ask you all to come up, and I'm going to be presenting you with these mayor's coins. And that one got away from me, and apologize for that one.
They're excited, too.
Yes, they are. So they do, they will come out of this, so be a little bit careful. But it's a two-sided coin, one says "City of Sunnyside, established in 1902", and then it's got the, an impression of the first mayor of Sunnyside, Mayor James Hederson, from September 1902 to January 1903. So he didn't serve for a long time, but we've been giving these coins out for a long time with his face on it. So there's more coins out there than the years that he served. But we'd like to ask you all to come forward.
Where do you want him at?
And I'm gonna be reading off a list on my paper, so it's not necessarily going to be in the order that you're standing. So go ahead and face, and she wants to take pictures of you, so make sure you're looking good for the pictures. I know we've got coaches here as well.
Coach you how to stand?
Yes. All right, yeah, so get in the picture. Somebody take a picture for the paper. All of staff wants to get out of the way.
Sitting up straight so I can be in the picture, so I can photobomb this one.
Do the peace sign, Julie.
No. Kind of do bunny ears, maybe do bunny ears. Smiling, guys.
Oh, sorry.
Get over like you.
Get closer.
There you go.
It won't wrestle you down, I promise.
Well, they could. Great and embarrassing would be the fall. All right, so I'm just gonna go down the list here, and I'm gonna say your name wrong. Zaden Gonzalez? Did I say it right? Sammy Valencia? He's not here, shoot. Jesse Denson? Chris Villanueva? Samuel Gonzalez? Kale Campos? And then we've got head coach, Baldilio Campos? Assistant coaches, we've got Ralph Mendoza? They're not all here, okay. Emmanuel Tejada? And then, is that everybody who's present?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm gonna read the names out anyway. We've got Jesse Torres, Jesse Barajas, and Austin Villanueva. Congratulations, you guys. That's awesome, I'm proud of you. Keep it up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Go Grizzlies!
Oh, a coach?
Yes.
Could you award these to your fellow coach and those who are absent?
Sure.
Yes. Oh, you gave me extra ones, okay.
So you have three?
Just three of them.
Thank you.
Right, are we missing three, or are we missing four? One wrestler? Four. Did I miss a couple?
Come on down.
Well, come on down.
Come on down.
Are they here?
Yes.
Were they being shy? No, they were up here.
They were up here, but they weren't on the list.
They weren't on the li, oh, okay. Well, then you get special, special treatment.
There you are.
Yay! Congratulations.
They'll get, they'll get you one.
Okay, we'll find you one here.
They'll get you one.
Here, we have one more.
Yeah. It's a little different, but it's still one. No, it's the same.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Those parts of the meetings are always the most fun. We'll let you guys go. Thank you for being here, thank you for taking the time.
Thanks, guys, take care. Nice to meet you.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and/or research for presentation at a future council meeting. Did we have a sign-up sheet up, or?
I just placed it up there.
Okay. So, we don't have a sign-up list that's ready to go today, but do we have somebody who wishes to make public comment this evening? You please come forwards, re, state your name into the microphone, and what city you reside in, and then make your comments. And if you want follow-up, sign up on that sheet, and we'll follow up with you.
Hi, my name is Laura Gonzalez. I am a junior at Sunnyside High School, and I am also a member of Latino Culture Club. I am here to formally invite council to our annual Noche de Familia. This event will be on March 21st at 5:30 PM at the Sunnyside High School. It is a college and resource fair where the entire community is invited, where they are welcome to attend to learn more about different college choices and opportunities that are available. We'll be having music entertainment, guest speakers, free food, as well as childcare available. Therefore, the entire family is encouraged to attend. It is a student-led event that we have been working hard towards all year, and we hope you guys can attend. I do have some flyers for you guys with all the information.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation.
Yes, thank you.
We'll be there.
Other individuals wanting to make public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes. Approve the minutes of the February 26, 2024 regular meeting. Payroll vouchers. Approve payroll vouchers numbers 119461 through 119465, and wire transfers as listed for $721,644.87 for the period ending on February 26, 2024. Claim vouchers. Approve claim voucher numbers 108620 through 108678, and wire transfers as listed for $869,264.10 for the period ending on February 23, 2024. Approve claim voucher numbers 108679 through 108771, and wire transfers as listed for $1,241,613.48 for the period ending on March 1, 2024. Council members, any item you wish to remove from the claim, I'm sorry, the consent agenda for discussion? Ms. Frausto?
I had a question regarding one of the invoices.
Can you, can you give us the invoice number?
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll go out, we'll get everybody who wants to remove something first, and then we'll let you discuss. So give me the invoice number, and then we'll move from there.
Uh, 2034.
Thank you, and I saw another hand up. Ms. Ripley?
Yes. 2023. And 2032. And 2071.
Okay, did I see another hand up?
I have one, um, 2028.
All right, very good. Okay, Ms. Frausto?
Yes. Sorry, I was looking at the flyer. Yeah, I just wanted clarification on, uh, seems like, did we use ARPA? Maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but it was a board up. What exactly did we pay out for the 1,500? I think it was professional services, 1,500, ARPA 2024 board up?
Yes, um, so yes, when, whenever we have a, um, an issue with a house, we had, with this house in particular, there was a fire. We would generally look for a local contractor to work with us to board up the house, and this was his rate to board up the house. He went, he purchased the wood, he had two people on site. This was, this is what he charged us to, for the day, to, to board up the home, to secure it, because it was, it was, it was a loss, and there were people breaking into it, so we wanted it secured, so that, that way nobody else would break into it.
Okay, understood. And is there a reason, so did we use ARPA money for us, or why is there like ARPA listed right next to?
Yeah, so this is part of our abatement fund. So there was a, a small pot of ARPA money set aside for abatement, and this came out of that fund, yes. And then typically for these, we were working with the, um, we're working, the, the house has a bunch of issues with it right now, so we're working with legal services on their end, and I, I believe we have a $1,500, we're working on getting a $1,500 lien on the house as well, so. And they, and they're, they're aware of it. The people representing the property are also aware of that as well, so. We try to, we try to recoup our costs. Anytime we spend money on any sort of abatement action, we try to recoup our costs in, in either placing a lien on the property or working with, getting the, the property owner an invoice to pay us back, yes.
Okay, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, okay. Ms. Ripley?
Okay, um, on 2023, there were, the ARPA was used for a lot of tools and equipment for the fire station?
Yeah, they, they received, um, I can't remember off the top of my head exactly what that amount was, but they, they received an amount for tools and equipment. And so this is out of that portion of ARPA.
Okay, and there was another one, 2032? Intergovernal loan?
Okay, this is for our wastewater treatment plant. We pay this, this is a loan payment we pay annually until it, until it's paid off.
From the wastewater treatment?
Yes, for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
I think it's paid off in 2032. That's just what I think off the top of my head, but something like that.
And then the fire station furniture, what all is that on 2038?
Okay, that wasn't one of them you listed, sorry.
Oh, I didn't list that one?
No. Didn't you still ask?
You can, yes, I just, we, we weren't searching for that one.
Um, I, I unfortunately don't have the list on that invoice, I'm sorry. And Mr. Chief Halbrook is not here today, so I don't have that answer for you. But I do know that they were replacing quite a bit of furniture and things in the station that hadn't been replaced for a while. But I don't know exactly what it is.
Okay, and then 2071? So that's the Yakima Humane Society. Is that where the dogs are going that they get in Sunnyside? They take them to the Humane Society, and they're charging us?
Some of them. They're only taking the ones, and Chief Lehman can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're only taking ones that have serious medical issues and things like that, that we don't have a place to house. And so we are sending them, and they do charge us that amount, because we don't have the ability to take care of some of those.
As well as vicious dogs that we're not capable of housing here.
Okay, okay.
And their fee is 110, I believe, per dog that gets dropped off.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and then, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just 2028, just curious what the Crisis Response Unit?
I'll let the chief comment on that, that's the Union Gap, that's the new SWAT.
This is the SWAT inter-local agreement that, uh, the budget that was made for SWAT is about, I believe, $300,000. It was divided based on population, and that's the city's portion to join that. And the last council approved the, enter into the ILA. And that cost may slightly go up year to year as, as costs increase, but based on our population, this was our portion of the 300,000.
No, it's just a yearly fee right there?
Correct, that's a one-time annual fee into that budget. The Union Gap is the city that is managing the fund, and so they're the ones that are responsible for sending out the invoice, receipting in the money, and then making the payments when the team purchases things and things like that.
Thank you.
Ms. Vasquez?
I didn't have any, but I just found one. So can you guys search up 2016? And just out of curiosity, because I know I'm now on the airport advisory board. So this says Advanced Internet Service Provider Communication. On the side, it says Airport Internet Services. I'm just curious if this is a monthly fee, and what specifically it's used for?
I believe this is a monthly fee, and I believe it's for the cameras. Is that what it's for?
They're using, we use it for the cameras, and they're also using it as their wifi that they use when they land and can check.
Sir, if you could speak into the microphone. Sorry.
Yes, it is a monthly fee, and they're using it for the internet and the camera that, uh, use the runway.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted clarity, because I barely saw that. Thank you.
Okay, everybody's questions answered satisfactorily? All right, if that's the case, what is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve, second?
All right, we've got motion to approve the consent agenda by Counselor Ripley, second by Counselor Hart. Is there debate on this item? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion carries. Active agenda. Item A, surplus equipment and vehicles. Consider approving a resolution to surplus equipment and vehicles. And Mr. Interim City Manager?
I'll turn this over to Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you. So tonight I bring you a, a list of equipment and vehicles that we want to surplus. A lot of these vehicles have been sitting there for a while, some of the equipment as well. We just want a way to surplus this. Our, our plan is to do a sealed bid. That would be the least expensive way to, to get rid of this stuff and surplus it. So after this, we plan on going to the next step in advertising, running it for a few weeks, and then closing it, notifying the public who, who received the highest bid, and then whatever doesn't, can't get rid of through that, then we'll just dispose of through, just salvage it through junk or try to recycle it ourselves.
All right, we've just, we've, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, so what I'm looking for is just a motion from, uh, from the council for a resolution to surplus the items.
Okay, so we've had opportunity to discuss this before. Is there further discussion that needs to go forward? Seeing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
I motion to approve.
A second.
All right, we've got a motion to approve a resolution to surplus equipment and vehicles by Counselor Frausto. It was seconded by Deputy Mayor. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion passes. Item B, interpreting services. Provide direction for interpreting services at council meetings. Or, if council would like us to enter into an agreement with either agency, please request a motion without objection. Okay, so we had an opportunity to discuss a number of different interpreting agencies and interpreting methods. Another one was brought forward this evening that bears a little bit of investigation, in my opinion. And so, um, and then Chief had brought up a point, and I'll ask you to share that too, Chief.
I, I think if, if council wants to approve what company they want to go with tonight, that's, that's probably applicable. But as far as equipment, I think that we've got another option on the table, and IT, who's going to be servicing that, should probably have time to thoroughly check into whatever equipment we're looking at. So he's going to be servicing it, maintaining it, and making sure it's operational for us. So I think on the equipment side of things, we're probably not there yet. I don't know if you want to vote on what company, or if you want to wait and do it all together. So I'll leave that to you, but.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir, Ms. Hart?
I, I kind of agree with you, with the city manager, interim city manager, to do it that way. I think that way we really have a clear picture of the equipment we're going to use, how difficult it might be to upkeep it, because that's an important part to think about as well. So yeah, I kind of would like to kind of hold off on adopting one of these companies until we have a full investigation on that.
Okay, Ms. Ripley?
I'd like to wait to see what Karen found out, and, uh...
Well, that, that would be part of the, don't you think?
Okay.
Don't you think?
Okay, and Ms. Frausto, you had a comment?
No, I was just gonna agree.
Okay.
Yeah. A motion.
Motion that we table this item?
Thank you. I second.
Okay, so we've got a motion that we table this item until we have more information. Motion by Mr. Beeler, second by Ms. Frausto. Is there debate on this item?
And, and just, just a comment to say, yeah, that would also give Karen plenty of time to get that information, to include it with the, with the other things that we're looking at, so.
Yeah, it'll help us make a more informed decision. But I highly encourage us, once we have that information in front of us, to, to make that.
Check the rights, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm assuming this motion, we have to make this motion without objection. Is there no objection to the motion?
No.
Okay, I'm not seeing any objection to the motion. All right, all in favor of this motion to table this item for now? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion carries, all right. More investigation, IT, got a small job ahead of you. Item C, boards and commission members. Provides direction to staff regarding boards and commission members who have completed their terms. All right, during our study session, council discussed the possibility of boards and commission members with expired terms. We've got a number of them, I believe the number is 17, is that right? Okay, whose terms have expired. And in the past, council has simply reappointed them. However, in the interest of cleaning things up, Deputy Mayor and I had a discussion about this, and came to the conclusion that maybe the best way to do that would be to vacate the expired seats, inviting those whose terms have expired to reapply, because we don't want to lose them if they're interested in continuing to serve. However, realizing that the position will be advertised as well, so others may also apply for that position. You've got a list on the screen in front of you of those whose terms have expired, and you see possible next steps. Reappoint them, or remove the members who have completed their designated terms, and opening the positions for at least 30 days to receive applications from interested individuals to be considered for appointment. Definitely want to make sure that those whose terms have expired know that they can reapply, and they're certainly welcome to do that. So council, I think at this point, we can make a motion, or we can just provide direction to staff on what we would like to have them do. So I'd like to hear from you at this point.
I would like for us to remove and then open up the application. I believe that would give way for other people who are interested in applying to do so.
Okay, Ms. Hart?
I was just going to, similar to what Ms. Vasquez said, my, I just, that the boards should know that they're expired, and be asked if they want to reapply. But that, again, that also opens it up to the community as a whole, anyone out there who may be interested in some of these boards and/or commissions. So I'm in agreement with Ms. Vasquez on that.
Okay.
To give the direction to, to staff to send the letters.
Ms. Vasquez, you look like you had a question or a comment?
No, me too. I would like to move to, to get the members removed and open up those positions.
Okay, so you're making a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Vasquez, second by Ms. Ripley? Two, okay, so what is the, you need to state your motion there, Ms. Vasquez, so that I can write it out?
I move to remove the members who have completed their designated terms and open up the positions.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I'm a slow writer. All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Vasquez to remove those who have completed their terms and open up those positions for applications. That's seconded by Counselor Ripley. Is there debate on this item?
Are we considering, um, a lot of these boards will not be able to operate, they won't have a quorum for minimum of 30 days, but it's gonna take two weeks to process this, and then you list it, then it's gonna take a week or two. So we're looking at potentially two months where some of these committees and boards can't even meet.
Correct, some of these commissions will not have a quorum, and not be able to meet for a period of time, and... Okay, they can meet, but they can't make decisions, is what our legal expert is saying?
I'm like worried about the Planning Commission. What's their schedule like?
So the Planning Commission, so if these two members are removed at this point in time, we'll be down three members, so we have four of seven. So all four would have to be present for our meeting.
You will have a quorum?
I will have a quorum.
You can't have a quorum.
How about LTAC?
LTAC won't have a quorum, but LTAC doesn't typically make recommendations for lodging funds for next year until the end of summer. So I think if, as long as we get them filled relatively shortly, it should be okay. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Warner.
Okay, and, and I do assume that some of these expired members will reapply for the position. Some of them seem to really enjoy their position, and I would definitely encourage them to do so. All right, so we've got a motion on the floor, any more debate on this item? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye, motion carries, thank you. City manager recruitment. Provide direction to staff regarding recruitment services. All right, council? We've had a chance to talk about it. Go ahead, Ms. Hart?
I think, I think when we were in our discussions earlier, we were pretty much of the, correct me if I'm wrong, we were pretty much in favor of going with the Colin Basinger and Associates for the 32, the contract price of 32,500 there. So we can get the ball rolling for the recruitment and start seeing some candidates come in, so. I'd like to, to make a motion that we approve Colin Basinger and Associates at the cost of $32,500 for city manager recruitment services in search of, that's the end of it. Had one word I needed that I didn't.
We have a motion, do we have?
Second, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I was gonna repeat myself.
Can we take a moment to explain to the audience that's here now why?
Sure, no, absolutely, I was going, I was going to explain, I was going to explain just to help people understand why.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we're going the direction that we are. So Colin Basinger and Associates, as you look at the chart, is obviously the most expensive of the agencies that's up there. And if we're going by that list price, it's going to seem like we have just jumped ridiculously into the most expensive place we could go without fully thinking about it. Colin Basinger guarantees the price is not going to be higher than that, and that price covers everything except for flying candidates out and housing them and feeding them. All the other ones have that $18,000 price, or $19,000 price, whichever it happens to be. And then they add to that $1,800 for background searches and other charges for different things. By the time they've done 10 background searches on potential candidates, there's another $18,000 added to the price. And if it continues beyond that, the price goes up exponentially, and then all sorts of other things are added to it. Colin Basinger and Associates guarantees the price of $32,500, plus we pay for their transportation to Sunnyside and housing them for the interview process. So that's where the value is. So initially, it looks like we've taken the most expensive route. However, when you read the proposal, it is... However, when you read the proposal, it is not the most expensive route. So, yeah, the collective gasp that I almost heard with that proposal, I wanted to make sure that everybody understands that this is not going to be, they're not going to be the most expensive route. And the City of Sunnyside has used Colin Basinger in the past in two different occasions in my experience, and we've been quite happy with the results. So we found them very easy to work with, and they've provided us a good slate of candidates, so. Ms. Fosco, it looked like you had a question earlier.
Mr. Beeler did.
Oh, Mr. Beeler?
Just answered it.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. You just answered it too. I was just going to share that they have more of a sense of who Sunnyside is, and we've worked with them.
They do know our city quite well, yes. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve Colin Basinger and Associates. Motion made by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Beeler. Any more debate on this item? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion passes. Okay. Item four, items from council member, Mayor's appointments for Boards and Commissions. We have a vacancy in the planning commission. We had somebody who's just stepped down. This vacancy will be shared and published in the Sunnyside Sun. So if you know anybody who would be interested in that position, please encourage them to apply. This is open to anyone in Sunnyside, so Planning Commission values your input, and it is probably one of the more important Boards and Commissions that we have as far as they meet regularly and they get to be involved in a lot of things that happen prior to council getting ahold of them. So you you do a lot of the legwork for council. We just made the decision on the Boards and Commissions as far as the expired terms. Look forward to having applications in hand as soon as possible. And again, encouraging those who wish to continue the position whose terms have expired to please fill out the application. All right, and Jackie, do we have any applications in?
No, not right now.
Okay, very good. All right, item B, Other Reports, Announcements and/or Questions by Council. And we'll start with Mr. Beeler.
I've got nothing right now.
All right, and Ms. Vasquez?
Yes, I'd like to share that I was able to go to the Sunnyside High School to watch their drama production, and it was Freaky Friday, I believe, and it was really good. They did an amazing job. I also had the chance to go to the high school to watch the orchestra concert in which my intern Michelle Ojeda sitting right over there is actually the concert master of the orchestra group, and they did a really good performance. And I believe one of the groups from the high school actually scored number one from all the orchestra teams around the valley, and they actually got the highest scoring. So that was really amazing, and I just wanted to say congratulations to them all.
That is exciting. I think sometimes the temptation is to focus only on the athletics or only on the sports or maybe only on the problems, but yet when we have somebody who's got talent in those areas, well done. And those types of skills are also valuable throughout life. It takes discipline, it takes good tone ability and practice. So well done and carry on with that. That's exciting.
And that would be it.
Ms. Ripley?
Nothing to report at this time.
Ms. Frausto?
I have a few things. Take it away. So I attended the Parks and Recs Board Meeting on Thursday, and they're looking for T-ball coaches, and they've also posted this on Facebook. So if you know how to coach T-ball, reach out to the community center. I believe if you are a coach, your one child plays for free. So again, if you know of anybody who can coach, they're currently looking. And then just last Friday, so working on a project called Mujeres por Mujeres or Women for Women, and it really is a project for the community. We kicked it off on International Women's Day, so shout out to all the women in this room making things happen. And it really, this project is really planning events and collaborating with women-led businesses or women-led organizations across the community, and really is just to create a safe space for women to come together, support each other, amplify each other, and really just exist in the world where so much is going on. It was really nice to gather around Catalinas, and some of us had coffee and some of us had cocktail, and many of us, both of us, had really, really great conversations. So more events of this, like these to come. We'll be posting more on Facebook and social medias, and I highly encourage y'all to come out and support and just be in community. And then recognizing youth, echoing Councilor Vasquez, it's being youths are doing amazing things. So recognizing the state wrestlers is at the beginning of it. I really encourage us as council, and the mayor coins are amazing, a thing to do and provide to them, and recognizing their efforts and for putting Sunnyside on the map so graciously. I mean, it really just doesn't end with sports. I mean, we have, you know, students involved in in science fair projects. We have students involved in orchestra. I mean, the best idea was try to learn the harmonica by like YouTube-ing videos. So kudos to all of you in orchestra and mariachi. And, you know, and it also shouldn't end with youth. I know that Catalinas Hair Salon is going to be celebrating their thirty years in business in Sunnyside. So being here for so long and providing so many of our residents their services and being able to thrive in community also deserves recognition. So I applaud council for being able to kick this off today, and I just, you know, I'm hoping for for many more of these recognitions to come because our residents deserve it, and we're always encouraging people to live up to their full potential, but we need to make sure that as the leadership are encouraging and supporting that along the way. And that's it.
All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so I myself went to a mariachi concert that the high school held. If you ever get a chance to hear those guys, they're pretty awesome. They have really good, you know, singers and instrument players. So wherever they go, they're looking to go, you know, wherever they're invited to, just support them, support any youth activities in the community. And, you know, we have to keep them busy with something instead of graffiti and other stuff. So that's all I have for now.
All right, Ms. Hart?
Well, you know, we have from Sunnyside a number of folks who started out with graffiti in San Francisco. They were from Sunnyside. And so graffiti can be art too. And as we know, one of our persons who are on our Arts Commission Board is is a graffiti artist as well, Chase Reeve. And we see his work all over the place, started out in graffiti, expanded and into art and commercial art. So. That's the good graffiti, so you can all work on spreading that news, so yes. Also, I do want to give a shout out to the Science Club. They'll be heading off to state here pretty soon. They have their Mid-Columbia. A lot of, a lot of awards down there, a lot of young people learning, going to be finding room in their bedrooms to where to put all their trophies and hide their checks, and they'll be going off, I believe, during the first week of spring break. It's usually when they go to to state, so shout out to those kids as well.
Great.
All right, thank you. Well, I didn't have an awful lot to report, but, you know, we're focusing a lot on our youth tonight, and I think that is fantastic. I think that the city can do a good thing by recognizing the accomplishments of our young people. These are our future council members. These are our future city leaders and business people. These are the people who are going to be running the city after we're long gone. So to recognize that talent, the gifts and abilities that they have now, I think is a good step in starting on that process to encourage them and encourage them into into leadership roles. I think that's a fantastic opportunity for us. I do want to recognize, since everybody else seems to want to recognize somebody, I want to recognize Sunnyside Christian School girls basketball team, taking sixth in state. And it was a tough effort. They play schools larger than them for the most part. And so they had some tough games. The kids were sick while they were playing, and they still pulled it out, so I'm very proud of them also, so. Anyway, that's all I have for this evening. The next item, item C is upcoming council meetings, and I believe that's our city clerk's purview.
Yes, so we have a special meeting on March thirteenth, which is the auditor's exit interview, and that's at one thirty here in this room.
May I ask a question? Is that going to be on Zoom?
Yes, as long as we have internet, yes.
I may not be able to be in town at that point, so I'd like to be in on Zoom.
Yes, I'll make sure to connect.
Look at Dennis when we say that, as long as we have internet.
Dennis hasn't fixed the situation yet, huh?
This way.
Out of his purview.
Hang in there, dude.
And then the next is another special meeting for a retreat on March eighteenth. Let me zoom in. We're going over all of these, the city vision, council code of conduct, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four city council objectives, budget review, and a revenue and expenditure overview, grant overview, department priorities, and then a discussion of those priorities. And then the next regular meeting is March twenty-fifth. As of right now, we just have one item, which is the stormwater rate analysis. And if anyone has anything, just let us know.
Okay, please take, make a note of the fact that on March eighteen, we start at nine AM, and that will be held here, correct? Yes.
The retreat?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you have a work schedule, you might want to make sure that your work schedule is free if if possible.
Okay. And, Yacalina, I'm pretty sure we're going to have interpreting services on the twenty-fifth, probably back up there, so I'll I'll make sure I email you.
Okay, and if anything needs to be added to any of those agendas, please make sure you talk to our city manager or myself and get that on there on the Wednesday before the meeting, no later than that, please. Next item, item from department heads. Chief Laban?
Just one quick note, Councilor Vasquez, once you get the information from the church, if you can get that to me and we can look into it. We'll start with Ms. Navarro.
Good evening, everyone. What I have tonight for you is just a brief recruitment report on City of Sunnyside vacancies. Currently, we have two positions at City Hall. That is the deputy development director slash fire marshal position, and we are conducting interviews for that later this week. The other position is the development technician. We are still working with the Trevor to finalize that, so that'll be out once we get all of those details finalized. In public works, we have four positions, three maintenance workers and one custodian. We are still actively recruiting for those positions. Both of those positions are open online and will be open, I believe, until the end of the week. In the police department, we have twelve openings. Majority of those positions do have a conditional offer of employment and are just going through the background stage. Fire department, we have four positions, three firefighters and a captain. Both of those positions have already been recruited for and are scheduled for testing at a later date, and that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Knight?
IT, we don't have much to report except for the incident we're having now with the internet being down. That is beyond our control. It is part of the power outage. It's gone there, the cabling and everything got tied up and all that stuff. So that is not something failed on our end. It's actually farther down the line or up the line, whichever way you want to look at it, so. Other than that, that's about it.
Thank you. Ms. Horner?
I have nothing big to report, just I'm really excited to have that auditor's exit interview on Wednesday, and I really hope that everybody can be there and make sure that the public knows that they are definitely invited, and as the mayor pointed out, it will be available on Zoom, and it will be recorded and available for people to watch on our website afterwards as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez?
I don't have a lot to report either. I just want to let everybody know there is a light at Central Park that is flashing really bad. We, it started right after, a few weeks after the trees that were taken down. PP and L had come over, disconnected those power lines while the trees came down, and then they reconnected, but for whatever reason, it's making the light flash. So we put a work order. We're just waiting for them to come out and address it, and that's all I have.
Mr. Martin?
So I don't have it listed there, but I will have it for you for the next meeting. So the Economic Development Commission, they have reviewed four applications at this point for our revolving loan fund. So you will be receiving four, four different applicants at your next city council meeting who have requested, who have requested to be part of the revolving loan fund program. So we'll be presenting that during our study session and during the, during the study council meeting. So that's pretty exciting. We've had a lot of interest in it, and it's, so far, it's going really well, and it's been a pretty, it's been, it's been a really good process that we've continued to refine, and I I hope that you're, you've shared the same interest in the, in the projects that we did when you see them. And then year-to-date, we've done, as a department, we've, we've created seventy-eight records, completed a hundred and seventy-seven inspections, collect and collected right around twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars in revenue and issued sixty-four permits. So we're seeing more come through the door every day. We should see those numbers start to creep up here pretty soon now that the weather's being more cooperative. And that's all.
Mr. Riley?
I have nothing at this time unless anyone has any questions.
Questions for Mr. Riley?
Welcome back.
All right, Madam Clerk?
I handed out the business card directories from the Sunnyside Sun. That is last year's, just so you can get an idea of what I'm going to talk to you about. Sunnyside Sun has reached out and asked if the city council would like to run a picture just introducing this year's council. We could either do individual pictures or a group picture. So I kind of, I'm requesting your recommendation or your direction on what you would like to do, if you would like to be on this business card directory or not.
Counsel, thoughts?
So you're requesting a picture?
So if you would like to be on this directory, council can decide if you want to do an individual picture, and I, we can piece it together, or you can, we can take a group picture or use the one from the swearing-in ceremony. It's a hundred and fifty-two dollars to do this?
We could, we could do that, a group picture, and then have our contact information, just so. Be able to contact us.
If we were to go with the route of doing it individually, would we have to, would you guys have to pay that fee for each of us? No, we just group them together. We'll create little graphic squares and put you guys together.
Ms. Hart?
So you're looking at a larger size and add, if if you're going to go for the the business card size, that price is?
Forty-eight dollars.
For mayor, deputy mayor?
No, the way she told me that she would like it is we pay the one fifty-two for probably, I think it's half the page, and then we just kind of put your pictures in a little square, you know?
Okay, so they're like smaller than postage size?
Kind of like the Sunnyside Sun has their picture there.
Postage size, okay, yeah. So we have, so that was the price of what?
Half the page.
The cost?
A hundred and fifty-two dollars.
And that comes from?
Your budget.
Our, the council's budget for like for trainings and et cetera, et cetera.
I actually like the way Sunnyside Sun actually did it. They have individual photos and their name underneath, and we could even put our contact information. I think it's easier, whereas if we put a full picture, it's a little, they'll be like, well, who's, who's Vicky? You know, there's two Vikis. So just to be able to have it more labeled and separated.
You have two Julias down there too, two Julies.
Anybody's middle name Julia.
So, so it sounds as if you guys kind of like the full-page layout with the postage stamp-sized pictures with the names under each of us and our, our position on council and.
Yeah, I will for that.
Okay, I'm seeing more heads nodding for that one than for anything else, so. All right, so that's, that seems kind of like the direction.
Okay.
Do you have individual pictures for everyone?
Councilor Beeler, I don't.
He's photo shy, though.
And I think Councilor Vasquez, I don't have one for you, but I think everybody else I do. I'll send that over. Okay. I do need it before Thursday. Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, Chief?
So I don't have a lot to report because our internet was down this afternoon, so I couldn't pull numbers and stats for you. But one thing, I don't know if you saw online, the Police Foundation is soliciting donations for a breakfast giveaway at Easter, a couple of days before Easter. It's going to be similar to the ones we did at Thanksgiving and Christmas last year. And when we were getting meals for two hundred and fifty, three hundred people, and we were getting five hundred people in line, I think we're probably, this is going to be something we're going to try to continue to do, so.
Okay, that's all I have. All right, well, there being no further business to come before council, and if there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty PM.
Woo!
Last summer.
Seven-twenty.
You might still get some sunlight out there.
Thank you, everybody, and good night. See you Wednesday.
We still might get some sunlight. No.
Okay, that I keep, and these I keep.
Yeah, soon though.
This I keep.
No, I actually liked it this way. Did you, did you like the experience or?
I, I liked it.
Yeah, uh-huh.
Mayor, are we having a workshop on the twenty-fifth, too?
Yes, we'll do the, we'll do the, the study session beforehand, yeah, we said we were going to do that starting in March. Yeah, so planned at five-thirty.
Five-thirty, then? Okay, putting that on my calendar.
It's gonna hurt me.
Right.
Because it takes us a.
Right?
Yeah, no, this was an early one, I would, yeah.
That's, that was why my deal is I had a trip from walking anyways.
Okay, noted.
Well, as I announced to council beforehand, too, I said this is a learning experience for all of us, so.
Yeah, I should have, I should have timed myself. Hey, did you take his picture while he's standing here? You gotta do your hair, okay.
Straighten and curl his hair and all that stuff, you know?
All right.
So.
I think so, because we don't have a fight here, and then.
The lights are all still on.
Question.